Trish Bodie? Here. Erin Johnson? Gloria Gonzalez Delucchia? Alexis Grimes?
Here.
Jim McKay? Christine Mauer?
Here.
Anna Snit?
Here.
With four board members present, I now declare a quorum of the Leander ISD Special Board Meeting this evening on May 13th. And we will go on to the next item on our agenda, Communication Announcements. We will start with Superintendent's remarks.
I have nothing at this time, Madam President.
Alright, and then Board Member's remarks?
No, we're fine. There's no rush. Okay, I believe, if I'm still in the loop, the Leaf Water Burger fundraiser will be next Thursday during Board Meeting. I'm trying to arrange Lyle to do a pickup for us of French fries. We'll see if I can get him to do it. But their fundraiser will be at the Water Burger, the new Water Burger in Leander on West Metro from 6:00 to 9:00. So please support Leaf and Water, and go to the Water Burger.
Alexis, thank you, and thank you for serving on that committee too. We appreciate you. Alright, Board Members, we will now move on to our Citizen Comments for this evening. I'm looking for my remarks here on my laptop. As you know, for the Board, for the Citizen Comments, this is not going to be, it's not a back and forth conversation. So please note that format, and because of that, we'll ask that your comments respect that limitation, and as such, please refrain from directing comments about an individual by name who would not be able to respond. Our Board operating procedures enumerate further requests, but I will sum up by saying we encourage polite and professional conduct. You'll have up to three minutes to address the Board of Trustees, and you will hear a chime when your three minutes are up. Board Members, we do have five individuals signed up to speak to us this evening, and we will start with Trista.
There are only two here so far as Madam President.
Okay. Well, you can have them both in, and we'll set them up there in the panel. Alright, so I will go down our list. Is Trista here? Alright. Is Tristan here? Alright, well, I'm guessing then these next three are gonna be my three. Jenna? Oh, Tristan is here? Okay, let's see who else we have. Jenna? Is Jenna here ready to speak? Is Barbara here to speak? Okay, well, if you want to come on up to the table then? Yep. Well, Barbara, you missed my, a little bit of my spiel, but I'll just say that it's not a back and forth conversation. But you do have three minutes. The chime will go sound when your three minutes are up. And there's a button in front of you to press when you're ready to begin speaking, and if you'll press it when you're done.
I am reading a letter from a teacher who wishes to remain anonymous due to concerns of peer work and social retribution to whom it may concern. I am a teacher for the Leander Independent School District. I love my job in so many ways. I am so thankful and honored to be put in the position to educate and inspire children. One of my own children currently attends an LISD school, and the other will be starting very soon. I am writing as a parent and as a teacher. The inappropriate literature that has recently been brought to light is frightening and disturbing to me in both of these roles. I fully support the petition against the harmful material that has been placed in the hands of high school students, and she shares the link. Every year brings more students that have high levels of anxiety and trauma for a number of reasons. These students come to our school for an escape from the hard things that they have experienced or are currently experiencing. I spend so much of my time helping students cope with trauma, anxiety, stress, and so much more. Education is definitely my main job description, but I do more and more social, emotional teaching and coaching on a regular basis. I, and I'm sure many other teachers, work hard to ensure that school is a safe place for them. Students know that they can come to class and be heard, cared for, and protected. This would not be the case if I were made to instruct with the books that have been brought to light. The literature that students read in schools will touch their hearts and minds in an intimate and personal way. Exposing them to literature that has rape, self-harm, suicide, child abuse, sexual abuse, graphic sexual scenes, and more will add to the trauma that they have already experienced in their lives. Although some of these books show that these things are negative, the exposure to the content cannot be erased. High school students have not yet developed in many ways. They are definitely not developed enough to handle reading about these traumatic topics. I'm not only speaking for the students who have anxiety and trauma already playing a major role in their lives, I am also speaking for those who have a very limited experience with anxiety and/or trauma. I am thankful that there are still many children who do not have many traumatic experiences in their lives. Unfortunately, by allowing them to have access to this inappropriate material, the district will be the ones to blame for the exposure to trauma for those children. I hope that not only the school board, but all of the staff and administration of LISD listen to the requests mentioned in the petition above and take action to make these necessary changes. The contents of these books have brought, and if allowed to stay in place, will continue to bring unnecessary exposure to inappropriate material causing trauma in these children's lives. I want to thank LISD for the steps that have already been made. They are noticed and appreciated. Please continue to take the steps that need to be taken to eliminate everything that would be traumatic to our children. Thank you for taking the time to read my letter.
Thank you, Barbara. Brandy? No, Brandy? Alright, then I guess our last three speakers, and y'all can come up here at the table. We have Tristan, Trista, Tristan, and Jenna. Go ahead, Brandy. Yeah, that's absolutely fine. Thank you. There's a button, yeah. Press it when you get ready to speak, and press it when you're done. And you'll hear a chime when your time is up. Or if you don't, the three-minute clock runs at zero, your time is up.
Hello, I wanted to speak about my concerns with the district's new mission statement. I've been forced to become much more involved in my children's education way past the typical volunteering for PTA or serving on the Booster Club. I'm constantly re-establishing boundaries that new practices seem to violate. I have to police the curriculum that's being handed to my children on a daily basis and guide my children to learning that aligns with my family's ethical and religious beliefs. That's why I'm deeply concerned with the mission statement, along with the new vision, the entire strategic plan, the district's definition of core beliefs, and the revamping of the graduate profile, which, by the way, doesn't even identify parents as key stakeholders. It's estimated that about 53% of the Texas population is Christian, and I reviewed all the graphic novels prior to the Springs Book Club. I was shocked with Kiss Number Eight, specifically the scene mocking Jesus on the cross. This is blatant religious discrimination. My son is soon to be confirmed through the Catholic Church. In this case, would you ever think it's appropriate for a child in a public school setting to have to defend his faith in a small group exercise where I guarantee the teacher's not trained to facilitate this conversation? The last time I spoke, I mentioned that the curriculum was riddled with civil rights violations, so I wanted to share this example, so that you know this is not just hypothetical. Based on the fact that the district has included so many religiously discriminatory books as part of the curriculum, I can say with certainty that my core beliefs will not align with the district's. I can say with certainty that since our values do not align at the foundation, that we will not align when it comes to the vision and the new mission statement. I want to share direct quotes from the Hewlett Foundation, which is referenced several times during the March 8th meeting regarding discussions around deeper learning, which was a concept used repeatedly to develop the vision, mission, and graduate profile. Prepare students for a world that has changed and continues to change radically. The racial reckoning of 2020 has made clear that our nation is at an inflection. So what would it look like if we rebuilt schools to center learning around care and equity? There continues to be a deep divide between the intentions of the district and what parents want and expect. At this point, I'm respectfully asking that discussions around the mission and further changes to curriculum be halted until the Board can have direct conversations with the community and parents. In addition, several of the conversations led by district facilitators included the use of the parking lot tool, an avenue to anonymously communicate feedback to facilitators or group leaders. Each meeting that utilized the parking lot tool appears to be a direct violation of the Texas Open Meetings Act. The conversations, whatever they were, that were had via the parking lot tool, should have occurred out loud. The school board and the district were required to adhere to this level of transparency. A court could invalidate any actions or decisions made during those meetings. The parking lot is explicitly identified in several district presentations leading discussions around the graduate profile, core beliefs, etc. As a community member, I would welcome the option to have further conversations with Board members for how we can work together to resolve our issues. This will not happen as long as the district tells parents who reach out for further guidance on the new curriculum to submit an open records request. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandy. Alright, Trista, Tristan, and Jenna, if y'all want to come up to the mics, please?
Hi, my name is Trista Parks, and I'm sure you're sick of me as much as I'm sick of being here. But I'm an eternal optimist and still hold hope that you'll be able to actively listen in order to fulfill the role in which you were elected. In recent weeks, we have been working to give voice to a silent majority of teachers. These employees work in an environment that is not conducive to express academic concern with fear of retribution in the form of name-calling, social media outing, and false grievances that jeopardize their very livelihood. This is all a direct result of a lack of decisive leadership, void of action to curb this threatening behavior. What we notice is a very small minority of self-proclaimed activist teachers who show up boldly in matching copyrighted attire with full assurances of board backing when expressing their views, as many on the Board share the same political views and organizational associations. Now, there's no question that everyone has the right to their own opinions and views, and I know that no one here would disagree with that. That's part of what makes America unique and free. However, the issue gets muddled when an organized group inserts a unified agenda into every level of the district, starting with the children, teachers, administration, and Board. It's most concerned that there have been no actions by leadership to stop this specifically as it relates to curriculum and the behavior of those representing LISD. The biggest disappointment is the fact that you're not even willing to listen to the other side. The Citizen Comments section is nothing more than an obligation. The lack of interest publicly displayed during these readings is the height of disrespect. As a Board, the arrogant, dismissive, passive-aggressive behavior that you display emboldens one side while silencing another. It leaves no room for discussion or compromise, and it revealed most concretely your lack of action to permit bad behavior. The result? You have reduced your employees to anonymous letters read by strangers to give them voice, then questioned the legitimacy and criticized the very nature of an anonymous letter. So I challenge you, can you please give your employees the respect they deserve by simply listening? I'll begin a teacher letter. It's broken into topics in effort to hold your attention due to your obligation. Why? With books, why does LISD allow erotica in schools? Why are the books way below Lexile level beginning, being pushed in the book clubs? Why, as of today, these materials are still in the classroom, with the public being told the opposite? Why are handjobs, ejaculation, and strap-ons permitted in LISD literature? Why does LISD expose student readers by having peer-led open discussions in class on the following topics? Masturbation, graphic sex scenes, how it feels to have a cock soften inside of you, the shaving of cunts, sucking her off until she comes, sex toys, bondage, clits, fingers inside of girl, rape, gang rape, celebrating gang rape, popping cherries, and vaginal dilation through dilation rods.
Thank you, Trista. Jenna? Oh, Tristan.
Why are rape, incest, father-daughter rape, and abuse themes that can trigger distress, anxiety, and emotional turmoil in students permitted in LISD book clubs? Why does LISD have to offer counseling along with the literature curriculum? Why are the words "fuck," "pussy," and "cunt" banned on public broadcasting but not in LISD literature that is part of the language arts curriculum? Why is it okay to promote gang rape through literature? Why is Leander allowing minors access to pornography through library research tools? Why do kindergartners have access to books telling them that they do not have to be a boy, a girl, or either? Why do kindergartners have access to books that tell them the doctor may have made a mistake about their gender? Why are students being ridiculed, punished, and intimidated for choosing not to promote LGBTQ pronouns with their own names? Why is the district adding controversial curriculum without parental knowledge or consent? Regarding teachers, why are teachers afraid to speak at the Board meetings? Why do teachers feel unsafe in their own district? Why are teachers being harassed by complaining to, for complaining to administration? Why are more and more LISD teachers secretly begging for LISD to be exposed? Why are teachers afraid to teach the language arts curriculum? Why were language arts teachers told not to open boxes of porn literature books ahead of time in review? Why do activist teachers' rights usurp parental rights? Why do some LISD teachers disregard parental rights by ignoring federal statutory law? Why are teachers reporting that they have not received any directive to remove the pornographic literature from their shelves? Regarding CCAC, the reviews, why are book review committees stacked in favor of the most vile books? Why are the curriculum developers responsible for these books controlling the very committees created to review them? Why are books that are eventually removed through the process just recycled and relocated to school libraries or other classrooms? Why did the gang rape book, which I personally read from last week, remain on the list of acceptable books? Will girls who have been raped or molested get immediate counseling? Or will they need to make an appointment for that? Why did taxpayers pay over $400,000 for pornographic literature? Social justice and critical race theory. Why did, why is LISD being secretive about the program American Experience? Why is challenging curriculum being replaced with social justice agendas? Why does LISD have an AP Language Arts Unit labeled propaganda, protest, and power? Why are we acting like this is not critical race theory-based? Why is it, is a controversial Vox article featuring the song "Fuck the Police" being suggested as a neutral teacher resource? Jenna will speak next.
Thank you, Tristan. Jenna?
Why is the language arts coordinator warning teachers to stop teaching dead white guys or find another job? Why was the district administrator who was responsible for the obscene book list promoted to Director of Humanities? Why are the two main language arts coordinators allowed to bully and intimidate teachers? Why are the two main language arts coordinators still employed by LISD? The Board. Why did a Board Member defiantly state during a Board meeting that parents don't need transparency? Why is leadership ignoring the fact that some Board Members coordinate with agitator activists in the district? Why are teachers told by a school board they can find another job if they don't agree with the new radical agenda? Why are Board Members allowed to freely mock and disparage parents? Why do Board Members get away with constant vile behavior online? Why is the phrase "fuck churches" okay with this Board? Why is critical race theory being secretly inserted into core subjects, and this Board acts clueless? Why does LISD, in particular three Board Members and the Superintendent, think teachers are inherently racist, so they need extensive ongoing training to correct this? Why is a teacher resource called "Why Talk About Whiteness" offered in the exclusive class "An American Experience"? Why is a supposedly nonpartisan Board Trustee speaking at a progressive group event? Why is a Board Member blogging that rape books help students who have been sexually abused? District. Why are more and more LISD families rallying for charter and private school options? Why is it so hard for this district to understand that parents have the ultimate authority over their own child's education? Why did the district pay a keynote speaker $8,000 to promote critical race theory that points blame at white Christians? Why was the controversial podcast "Nice White Parents" offered by a Board Member? Why is the district prioritizing a biased social agenda that creates and promotes hate and division within our district? Why was it suggested in a Board meeting that early release days peddled to parents as teacher personal work time be used for racial trainings? Why is fiscal irresponsibility running rampant in LISD while administrators make six-figure salaries? Superintendent. Why did the Superintendent apologize for being white? Why doesn't the Superintendent live in or relocate his own children to our Destination District? Did he or did he not receive a $15,000 relocation fee to do so? Why has dripping springs become a topic of interest in LISD? As usual, I am sure that none of these whys will be addressed. Parent-teacher complaints and concerns are falling on deaf ears in LISD. What has happened to our Destination District? Why are parents regretting moving their families here? What an embarrassment we have become. Why? I'm done.
Thank you, Jenna. Alright, and for our community and individual audience watching online, remember Citizen Comments is not the format where we will have back-and-forth discussion, or we can answer any of these questions. It's where we hear your comments for three minutes, and then we can move on to the next items, or we move on to the next items on to our agenda. The next items on our agenda this evening is discussion-action items. Consider approval of the district mission statement.
Good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustees, Dr. Gearing. Thank you for allowing Ms. Carlene and I to come back up here this evening. And as you know, we have spoken at the last two Board Meetings about the work on our mission statement. We've had great meetings with Mrs. Smith and Mr. Johnson to continue these discussions. And we do have a draft that we are putting forward tonight for approval. But before we get there, I'd love for Mr. Johnson and Mrs. Smith to kind of talk about our conversation this week and how we, how we ended up here.
I'll start, but he's gonna finish it. We had a really good meeting on the 11th. I'll be honest, every time I went to one of these meetings, I always changed my mind because I like to look in different lenses. And we had a really good conversation because I, I originally wanted to go with Group Two's recommendation of condensing it all down. But the more we started talking about it, and especially with Erin making those connections for me, like, I feel like that what we've drafted here is truly like, it plays into the entire core beliefs, our graduate profile. And there was one thing we were talking about is the partnering with each family. If we wanted it to be LISD family or family, because the way I was looking at it is that, you know, we do have our LISD family, but we have families in our district who don't attend LISD, and yet, you know, our schools are parts of our community. So in some way or another, they are, you know, using, not using, but they're coming to our schools, whether it's a festival or it's something going on at the school, you know, a car show. So I'm really proud of the work we did, and I'm gonna
The, the last conversation we had together was relatively straightforward, relatively easy because of the work that had preceded it. We, we had a number of recommendations to kind of massage, but they were all pretty consistent. And I think, as Anna has described, one of the things we talked about was particularly in that third bullet, and how exactly to characterize that language. We settled on this language, partnering with each family, to intentionally kind of separate that from the, the student, right? As Anna described, we have many families in our LISD community who may not have students in our system today, and we still want to partner with them for mentoring purposes. They may have future students, they may have past students, but they're still part of our education community. And so partnering with each family in the district is important to us. What else? We, we felt generally like the work that had preceded our discussion had kind of set a, a pretty strong foundation. We felt like this three-pronged mission statement gives us some pretty solid anchors, I guess, to build off of, so they can fairly easily, fairly naturally, and organically extend district goals and, and other actions from the mission statement. So we felt like it was, it was a pretty strong, pretty robust framework, like any mission statement. It won't ever be perfect, I suppose, and may not make everybody 100% happy, but we felt like it was a pretty good summation of the, the work and conversations we've, we've had up to this point.
I really like the, what you described about partnering with each family, with each family, just because there's a lot of folks that are in our community, like, that maybe don't have kids, or their kids are grown and gone, but they're still part of our community. So I really think that's great. I was, the first thing that popped into my head was those guest readers that would come to the elementary schools, and, you know, typically retirees would come and read to the kids or be a reading buddy. And so that, that kind of does incorporate, I really like how that incorporates those folks as well.
So that kind of covers our discussion there. We are asking for action tonight on this mission statement. And so, and we just thank all of you for the work that you've done, including our administration behind us, to get us to this point.
When we adopt our mission statement, are we thinking this is something that, do we revisit it annually, every two years? Are we thinking this stays for five? What is the, the thought process once we adopt this?
That's a great question. And I don't know that any of us has anything approaching a definitive answer, right? I think as a collective group, we get to determine when we tire of the mission statement or when it's no longer resonant. But I think, given the kinds of multi-year initiatives it's likely to spur, it probably needs to stick around for three to five years or something along those lines. But it's certainly something we could have discussion about on a more frequent basis in terms of, you know, is it still resonant? And do we, do we still like the overall direction and those kinds of things?
I do, I like the idea of a check-in, like an annual check-in of how are we doing, checking the pulse, but with the thought process that this is something we're looking for to keep in place a little bit longer. I have no other questions. Board members, do y'all have any tweaks or changes? Because otherwise, we are looking for action tonight on this mission statement, so we'd need a motion.
So I don't know what, I don't know, I watched the video, but I don't know how we, but the thems and the theirs, I don't know. I'm knowing and appreciating them, partnering with their family. I like it when you said partnering with each family, but I know it says each up above, so I don't know. I don't know if there's a way, better way or not. You probably all already.
No, it's a, it's a good question. We discussed it briefly in our previous conversations. I think in both of the last two conversations, we talked about it a little bit. Like you say, because the predicate is each individual student, appreciating them makes sense and nurturing their personal growth makes sense. It's this last one where we felt like we needed to deviate just a little bit to expand that, that connection or that intended audience. So that one's a little bit different in that regard, but if there's other language you like better, if we, well, I guess one of the reasons that we used the each student language was to try and link pretty, pretty tightly the mission statement and the vision statement. And so we're kind of taking that key phrase in the vision statement and trying to drill down and expand on it. So I think that structure makes sense, but if there's language you like better, now is definitely the time.
Or you want a few minutes? We can chat a bit while you. I'm curious from Erin and Anna, as you're talking about this, we'll give Alexis a few minutes to talk before we do our motion. When you're seeing this how, what were the things you were thinking about it would look like in a classroom as y'all were looking at this? Like what, I mean, are you seeing something different than what we have? Are you seeing something enhanced with this? Or what was your kind of thought process?
Well, for me, two things is, I really feel like, you know, we talk about individual education plans and, you know, empowering the student, you know, for them to succeed. And I really feel like when we were talking about this, I kept going back to one of our core beliefs, the, one, two, three, the fourth bullet point. And I really feel like that this kind of incorporates that, like, it's truly providing each individual student with a route to success, or what success looks like. But what I did love about this, this mission statement that we came through is I noticed in our last conversation, like, it was allowing Erin and I to start thinking about the goals. Like, we started going off into that direction. So like, well, what does that look like? And then, you know, and then we would go down that path, and they were like, wait, 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 stop, stop, stop. So for me, I, I, I love the way it got us thinking. Like, it was a very good conversation. So I'm real excited to see, like, what that breaks down with each of our board members and what that looks like and entails as far as goals and the next step, so.
I would echo that. I think as we were discussing, we would, I mean, some of this language reflects aspirational future state, some of it reflects current state expanded. So for instance, knowing each student, well, we know each student today, but do we know them as deeply and in as nuanced and complex a way as we'd like to, to better serve them, right? So yeah, we certainly do lots of that today, but there's so much more we might do. And appreciating them, I, I think some of that comes with learning the, the new and different things about them that we'd like to know, is in that process, how do we demonstrate that those things that make us unique are cool and interesting and show not just respect for those things, but actually some level of appreciation, admiration for those things that are unique and interesting about us? And then as we talked about this phrase "personal growth" in the second bullet, I think that stimulated a lot of additional discussion. And we've talked about this a bit in the graduate profile in that context. It could just say academic growth, right? We know that's the predominant area of personal growth that we're really here to serve. But we also recognize that to make our students, our children, more successful, more useful, more valued, they need a lot of additional supporting skills. We've talked about resilience, and we've talked about adulting and some of those other kinds of things, collaboration, and lots of other skills that we want them to develop that are all part of a, a bigger package of personal growth and development. And so, so, you know, it's, it's all of those things. It's some of now, and it's some of what could be. And so I think there's a lot in this that is aspirational, a lot of it that builds on the good work that's already been done. And those are just some of our ideas, right? As we continue to think about this and, and work through this and translate it into district goals and priorities and initiatives and all that, I'm, I'm sure we'll have lots more great ideas.
All right, Sophia, I just want to take a few minutes to read over, see if you have any questions. Otherwise, I need somebody to make a motion.
I move that the Board of Trustees approve the mission statement of, hold on, I've got to put my glasses on, sorry. That's bad, that's bad. We will cultivate each individual student by knowing and appreciating them, creating a safe and supportive environment to nurture their personal growth, and partnering with each family.
A second.
I'm looking at what's written, and so I see it says their family, it's each family is what we have? Each family, okay. Okay, well, there is a motion, a second. If there's no other discussion, Alexis, we're ready to vote? You're ready to vote? Okay. All right, well, that, without further ado, then, all those in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five ayes, no nays, motion carries. There you go, congratulations. Erin and Anna, thank y'all so much for the time and the work and your dedication to our students and our district. We'll move on to our next agenda item then. The strategic planning discussion.
Good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Gearing. We are excited to be here tonight to continue our strategic planning discussion. I am Sarah Grissom, one of the area superintendents, and I have with me tonight.
Good evening, Susan Cole, Executive Director of Instruction and Professional Learning.
And so the purpose of this time tonight is really to engage in a collaborative process to start narrowing the focus as we begin that long-range planning to achieve the vision and mission. So we are going to use some protocols and tools to make sure that we are honoring every's, everyone's voice in this process. And what I'm, I'm looking forward to tonight is having some dedicated time to really dig into this. You know, this is such important work as we think about the vision and mission that have been laid out before us. And sometimes our, our strategic conversations end up at midnight, so it is nice to have, you know, when, when we're fresh, to be able to talk about some of these high-priority, high-leverage topics in our, in our district. So this looks familiar. We have used this quite a bit, just our road to a strategic plan. It depicts the journey that we have been on. And so just wanted to take a moment just to kind of step back and remind us of that journey. And so if you recall, this all started last summer. And so if you don't mind pulling out those core beliefs, I am gonna, we're going to refer to those here in just a little bit. But it did start back last summer as we asked you to start thinking about what were your individual beliefs that drove your decision-making as, as a board member here in LISD? And what do you see are those that should drive us? And then we worked through a process to come to collective beliefs. And through that, we gained two new board members and dropped them into that process as quickly as possible to catch them up because their, their voice was important in that process. And through all of that, you actually defined these core beliefs that we are leaning back to, leaning into and driving, to drive decisions. And we've seen those play out in conversations here in board meetings, and they have been powerful tools even outside of this boardroom as we have taken them to district leadership and campus leaders. So we have those out. So I'm going to ask you to keep those out while we engage in this conversation. So in the meantime, we also have been working on refining the graduate profile. So you have a copy of this in front, in your folder so that you can have it in front of you as well. So I'm going to ask you to pull that out. So we have had a, a cross-functional group working through this as we have been looking at what is the promise that we want to make to our students as they are leaving our system. And so you have engaged in giving some feedback in this process. Also, thousands of stakeholders have been able to give feedback, and this has been an ongoing iterative process. And this is where it is as of today, although I know there was a committee meeting, there may be some minor tweak. But each time, it's just getting better and better. And again, you know, just thinking about what is it that we want to see lived out in our classrooms every day for every child? That promise to our students, it's a powerful thing to think about. So you have that in front of you, next to your core beliefs. And then we also, in this journey, have been working through vision, and now mission took a chance on putting it up there with the updated version, hoping it was going to get approved. So, but it, it is, it's powerful work as you all have defined where is it that we want to be in the future? What is that ideal? What are we trying to create here in this district? And so that vision cast that, that picture for us, and then that mission shows how we are going to get there. So powerful language right there. And so I am going to ask you just to have all of those pieces out in front of you as, and take that all in for a moment. Because as we are looking at those pieces, what you have is created, you've defined the ideal, you've defined what you want to see in our system for our students, for our staff, for our parents, and our community. And it is, it's powerful when you look at all of those pieces together, the connection between the two, the intentional connection between all of the pieces, it, it just, it's a beautiful picture. And I know it's been hard work to really lean into, and it, but it's amazing. It is exciting work as we think about where are we headed as a district. So this is the ideal you have in front of you. You've depicted that. So then how in the world are we going to get there, right? What are the steps that we need to take? How do we start aligning all of our efforts and all of our resources to make this happen? We're starting to see some things emerge through conversations, and so we just wanted to spend some time tonight to really starting to narrow that focus. Because as we think about what are those long-range goals in order to achieve this that is depicted on, on this screen and in the graduate profile and living out those core beliefs, where are we going to put all of our efforts collectively to ensure that we are getting there? So we're going to spend some time digging into that a little bit tonight.
So as Sarah mentioned, those three documents you have in front of you really portrays that ideal, where we, where we want to be, where we aspire to be, where we're working to be. And so as we embark on the next steps with our strategic plan, we need to really think about our current system and really think about spending time on understanding where we are and, and then thinking through next steps. So we're going to engage in a protocol, a continuous improvement tool called a force-filled analysis. analysis. So we're going to start with thinking about the drivers. So what are those positive forces that will help us and support us to get to that ideal? What are those drivers or positive forces that would help us? So one example, when I think about this, the first thing that came to my mind is our awesome life changers, our great, committed teachers and employees that go above and beyond for our students every day. So that would be an example of a driver in our system that we might want to capture. So we're going to just take a few minutes and have you just individually think through and process through and again, look at kind of that ideal, our vision, our mission, graduate profile, core beliefs, and think about what are some drivers in our system? And you can just write some of those down. You can do it on the sticky notes or on scratch paper. It doesn't have to be one per sticky. So just go ahead and take some time to think through that and see if you can capture some of those drivers in our system, positive forces.
Are you wanting just a bunch of items? Or you want us to pick the two most important? Or what, kind of tell me the scope of what you're looking for here?
It's really a brainstorm, so it's not about how many a number, but you're welcome to put several as you brainstorm.
Checking in, do we need another minute or so? Feeling thumbs up if you're feeling... Okay. All right, so we've thinking about drivers in our system, those supportive forces. So now we're going to ask you to think about the barriers. What are some of those things that are preventing or inhibiting us to get to that ideal? So an example, the first thing I thought of, which is kind of the obvious, is COVID. And we've been living in a pandemic for over a year. So how we get out and come back to even a new and better normal in meeting the students academically, socially, emotionally? So that was a barrier, obviously, just this pandemic that we're living in. Thumbs up if you have some barriers listed. All right, so what we're going to have you do is partner up, and you're going to share your drivers and barriers and see, are there some things in common? Are there some things you hadn't thought about? And just have a conversation. So Christine and Bruce, would you mind partnering up? And Trish and Erin, and Alexis and Anna, for just a few minutes? And then we are going to have you share out some of these to capture these on one of the charts.
And then opportunities are kind of a driver, like there's an opportunity that they're interested in.
I didn't even think about that.
Like, yeah, yeah.
Our culture of continuous improvement, constancy of purpose. Resources, I think we have great facilities.
I said angst and stress.
Strong resources, strong leadership of the board and that registration level, growth mindset, and this passion for public education that we have here and for transformation of that public education system. So that's kind of what I got.
Okay.
And I had life changes.
Yep. And on the bad side... I put money because there's always, there's never enough money.
So I had resources on this one too. So I put it on both because, yes, we have very facilities in that, but we have to navigate school finance.
And it's funny, I had pandemic written down before she even said it. I'm like, yeah, we're, I mean, I was thinking about it the other night.
I was doing another size of it.
Trish mentioned something about how we managed to come through this, not having to close the score, and nobody died. Like, that's huge. That's, I know, that's a big deal. It's a big deal. And that says a whole lot about our leadership and you and your team. And I mean, I think it says a whole lot, it says a whole lot. We can, we can deal with the noise, we can deal with the, all the other stuff that comes with other things, but that's big, in my mind. So I put staff money because I think it's separate from, I was thinking building money here, building resources, and then staffing resources? So like, first thing that came to mind was, you know, sometimes class sizes have to get too big, or we don't have a, you know, it would be, wouldn't it be wonderful if we had a teacher's aide in every single classroom? You know, that it was a co-teacher in every room. I mean, that's a dream, right? And then fast growth. I kind of put that as a barrier for us because I know that trying to keep up is really hard. Yeah, it's really hard.
Yeah. What I added here was incremental degradation. So what happened was with culture and this ties to constancy of purpose. This can break down when things change, when you expand too fast. Because you've got so many new people coming in, you can't get them trained up fast enough and well enough to maintain this constancy of purpose. So as we develop all these vision, mission, all of that's got to get taught to the new people coming in. But it's hard to keep up and really get it down deep enough.
Yeah. This is really good.
Yeah, this is huge. And this is the other huge one. I wrote it this way, but it's really...
We've always done it that way.
...brainwashing about what public education looks like. And we've done it this way for 120 years, and why would we ever change it?
Correct. Well, gee, I wonder. Yep.
And here's the problem too, is that everything around us is changing so fast, and that's creating this, which is just...
Well, and just thinking about how that, I, that's one little part that really gets to me, is we've always done it that way. Doesn't make it right. You know, I think, I think, you know, we've got to sort of start thinking about things differently, or at least from a different lens, like, and that's something I learned from Krista, is, you know, looking at, whose lens are you looking through? I can only usually look through mine. I can look at it through kind of my kids, but not, but again, he's not, yeah, so it's very interesting.
And...
Good stuff.
Yeah, I think it's remarkably difficult to break out of this, right? And so that's one thing that I've watched and learned during the pandemic.
Yep.
You know, is that it's forced us to change our thinking about some things.
Correct.
Now the trick is going to be to hang on to them and not...
Right, right, right. And I think that this drives this, and this drives this, so it's that, it's an ugly cycle. Good stuff. We're done. Right on there.
I did programs too. You had...
Do on your sticky notes.
She can make you a report out.
Yeah, but I was, you know, incubating, you know? Finance and athletics, I just broke it out, yep. Parents, community and event, and I was thinking about like, you know, like my kids are swimming.
It's interesting, just going to be on both.
I think the kids getting involved in those.
Yeah, it's one of those tricky ones. We're blessed to have what we have.
But we could always use more.
We could use more, but what could we do if we had?
Yeah, oh gosh.
You know what I'm saying? That's what you said, if we had an aide in every classroom.
Oh my gosh. Life-changing.
Exactly. And then there is a resource issue that we have to do.
Exactly.
Or what do we stop doing?
In order to afford that.
It's also some of that, like what do we stop doing?
To do that. Exactly.
All right. I think all the groups have had a chance to share and discuss. And so I'd love to hear some of the things that you talked about. So we're going to start with drivers. And Anna, Alexis, if y'all don't mind starting and just giving us one from your list. Only one to start with.
Okay, we just had to confer. Learning environments. Erin and Trish? We had similar ones. We're doing the drivers. We talked about life changers, teachers and staff. Thank you. There's a lot of lefties in this room, I'm just saying. Sorry. Passion for public education and transformation. Okay, it's sort of two, but it's one, whatever.
And we know some other groups might have had something similar, and just, you know, just mentally check that off your list. All right, next group.
Community partnerships. Extracurriculars. Extracurriculars. I have down opportunities. So I had a lot of the same. So deeper learning? We had parents. Oh, yeah. Parents? Let's see, hold on a second. Growth mindset. So Anna had like superintendent and board, and that was just, I guess, to come back to this, like, goals and driving the district forward and mission and vision. So Erin had guiding documents. He was also talking about mission and vision, so I don't know if that's a subpoint or a different one, but I think guiding document, guiding documents are...
So just guiding documents?
Yeah. No, guiding documents, right on this. There's overlap, but I think it needs its own bullet. And one that we both had down was resources. So with that, you can put facilities, support, services, et cetera? Do you want me to say, students, I guess? Erin, I don't know if we have any others.
Bruce will love this one. Assessments.
You got one more, or are you good?
Oh, I've got a couple more.
Oh, okay. Constancy of purpose.
You're out? You're done? Curriculum? You're done? Finances? And TEA and government agencies?
I'll do a spoiler alert. Erin and I both discussed how that can be a driver and a barrier, so.
There are a few of these that can go both ways. That's it.
All right. So we're going to shift now to barriers and sharing some of the barriers that you wrote and discussed.
So every student not, not in class or campus or not engaged.
Okay, sorry, say that again.
Every student not in campus or not in class or not engaged.
Not engaged. Slash. Indeed. Engaged. Thank you.
So I wrote fears and doubts. Trish had a couple of related items.
I said stress and angst.
Yeah.
Stress and angst.
Do you want those combined?
However y'all want to do it, I'm not sure.
It's up to you. Do you see them as the same?
I, I don't know. I guess it depends on who you ask.
There you go. Yeah?
Okay, thank you.
Resources. So we had, it's along the lines of resources, but it's technology, internet, accessibility. So those gaps.
We had time.
Which I thought was wild that he and I both had that on our list. Status quo. Lack of interest because of programming or lack of program?
Lack of interest.
We had finances listed here as well. One of those switch hitters. Fast growth.
So I had campus options. Which just meant.
Accessibility.
Yeah.
Programs. Available campuses.
Related to growth, Trish mentioned size. All right, our last one is again TEA and government agencies.
Okay, so everyone feels good about sharing everything that they want to share from their drivers and barriers. So what we're going to do now is take about a 10-minute break. And during that break, we're going to ask you maybe to go over also and just take a look to, and think about, are there any of these that you might need to clarify or have clarity about when we come back from the break? So we'll see you back in, how about seven twenty-five? Seven twenty-five.
Okay, are we ready?
We're ready to start.
Okay, so the next thing I wanted to do, I asked during the break if you were thinking about any of these barriers in particular that we might need to clarify, or you might want to ask, can you tell me more about what you meant by that? I think everyone was brilliant.
Does anybody have a question? Well, because I can clarify, like our first one, it was related relative to COVID.
When you say every student not in class, so you're talking about some of the virtual challenges of that?
Yeah, yeah.
So can I ask a clarifying question on fears and doubts? What do we mean by that? Yes, sir.
So, in my mind, that, I mean, it could be many things, but first, in my mind, it was self-doubt in students, right? Not believing in themselves, or not being apprised of their potential, their capacity. But fears and doubts could also impact our teaching staff, or our principals, or our board. So it's how the presence of fears and doubts affects our psychology, and how it affects our expectations.
Question about time. What did you mean by time?
Well, I was thinking about the fact that it just seems like there's not enough of it. And there's either another meeting, or another event, and trying to help your kiddo balance that well, and balance what they can do with their time. And same thing for the community and teachers. How do we do all the amazing things we need to do with the time that we have?
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing. I mean, we used to capture instructional days. Now we think in terms of instructional minutes, and we do that because they're limited, they're scarce, and when they're gone, it's a new year.
Any others that you need clarification around? Okay, so what we're going to ask you to do is, you have four blue dots, and we're going to ask you to put dots by the ones you think are the biggest barriers in the system. I would ask you to think about what things we can control, and what things we may not be able to control. As you do that, you can put more than one dot on an item, but you have four dots to place on any of the barriers that you feel are the biggest barriers in the system. You're welcome to go ahead and do that whenever you're ready.
I know.
You know, he's on my floor, Doc. Can you sit down here after, or go sit down?
I think it might be good to stay here just for a few, couple of minutes. Test, test. So as we look at, as we look at this, and we kind of synthesize through kind of where the dots landed, kind of how are you thinking about that? What's going through your mind right now? Yes, Erin?
Well, I thought I knew what resources meant before we started, but as all those dots accumulated around resources, I'm not sure what those people were thinking when they placed the dots there, right? I'm not sure what that indicates.
So for me, resources was not just money, it was staffing, and, and, and building, buildings and the stuff that goes in the buildings, like all the, all the things that you would consider a resource, but also, to me, the people, the people come into play. We talked, Bruce and I talked a little bit about how wonderful would it be if we actually had like a co-teaching model where we had a teacher and an aide in every single classroom? Like that would be, that's the dream, right? I mean, that would be brilliant. But what would it take to get that kind of resource? Like that is a huge barrier, because that's a lot of money.
Which goes to the finance then.
Correct.
No, same thing, just facilities.
So yeah, if there's any of those that you want to clarify?
Yeah, well, and maybe just a quick follow-up, because as I look at Leander ISD, I see a relatively resource-rich district, right?
And you have it on both sides.
And, yeah, I'm just trying to understand how that is a barrier when we're relatively affluent. Just, and I'm not, I'm not questioning, just really trying to understand the, the ideas behind seeing that barrier, right?
So I think for me, like when I look at that, I'm thinking, what came into my mind was, if you take a tour of middle school campuses, some campuses have outdoor spaces, outdoor gardens, therefore allowing them to experience other areas in science, and take it a step further. And then you've got some schools that don't have those resources, for whatever reason, not because of the district, because, you know, we don't, it's just because either the community, the parents, PTA, whatever. So when I look at resources, I'm thinking about, you know, my individual student, and then I try to look at the other schools and compare, and just see how their resources are, they are different for whatever reason. So I think that that's what I'm looking at, because, you know, my child's experience at one campus is going to be different if they're provided with other outside resources that are plentiful for the education environment, as opposed to a campus that's not necessarily has that advantage, and not necessarily, their, their resources are, look a little different.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's important to distinguish between different and less.
Yes, yes.
Right? Because different is okay, I don't think we want all of them to be identical.
Right.
But yeah, I think it's, it's worth noting where there are disparities in quality or quantity.
Yeah, just for me, I wonder if it's how we use the resources we have, as opposed to a lack of resources, it's just how do we portion them out?
I think that's where I was listening at, from that lens of, like, we could do this program, maybe on one campus, and maximize a resource in a facility better, and just change the way we think about how that becomes accessible to the whole district, right? But really, just maximizing what we do have, and the spaces we do have, especially if we have declining enrollment somewhere, but just that opportunity of, this could happen on this campus, and it could be so rich, and we just make it work for everyone in the district, like those students, yeah.
So I, I hear a few things from this, talking about resources, is that access, the facility, how we're utilizing our resources, people, buildings, all of those things, which I think connects to what you're talking here, so. I'm curious about status quo. We didn't unpack that one before, so I know that, I think, came from y'all, so we're going to talk about what y'all talked about.
Yeah, I, I think, I think one of, some of the most dangerous words is, we've always done it that way, right? I think, I think we get stuck in a rut, and, and I think that can be a barrier for us, is, is always, well, we've always done it this way, and even if it isn't working, you know, sometimes we want to continue along that road, because it's comfortable, it's something we've always done, and to do something different, or look at something from a different lens, then we're, we're kind of opening our minds to stuff that might be uncomfortable. And I think when we do things in a status quo kind of way, or mindset, that it doesn't allow for growth. And so that was kind of my, our thought process behind status quo.
Yeah.
Bruce, did you have something to add?
Actually, went back to resources, and so, I'm a slow learner, so, have to process. It's also not so much, what, what can we, what can we do with what we've got, or what can we not do with what we don't have, but what could we do if we had it different, right? So what's possible?
Which goes to status quo, too.
Right, right.
And we've talked a lot about that as a leadership team, as that new and better normal, and coming out of this pandemic, and how we can really leverage that to do things a little different and better.
Yeah, and we talked some also about coming out of the pandemic, there's, there's going to be a temptation to go back, instead of taking some of the lessons we've learned and continuing forward.
Any other thoughts or comments as you process through this?
Yeah, I had, I put two of my dots on stress, I put two of my dots on stress and angst, and I see them a little, I do see them different than fears and doubts, and I remember we had a discussion earlier, and so I was just processing after I was listening to us discuss them about fear, fears and doubts. I think stress and angst can come from your student population, with like we talked about earlier, social media, and kind of their environment coming out of COVID. I think stress and angst can also come from our parent population, as we're trying to also come out of a COVID environment, they've been learning at home, now how do we get them into the school? Are they there? I don't want to bother the teacher and send them all these emails, but why did they not miss this? Can I send them an email here? Do I just go up? Do they prefer me to talk? Like, there's a lot of, you know, in middle school, do you really get to go up to the school anymore? My goodness, you can't even go to lunchroom, even if it wasn't a COVID environment. So there's just, there, there are all these different, I think, almost self-imposed barriers, too. So I don't, when I look at stress and angst, I'm not sure how much of that is actually a district only, or a personal and a district working together to make a really strong barrier.
That partnership. And how do we come out of this and make sure every kid is connected, and feels their place and valued, as well as our, our parents and our community?
And I put finances, similar, but mine, I was thinking about some of the discussions we've had as a board, we're talking about looking at our revenue, and how are things structured? And sometimes you get a certain structure, and it limits your ability to do the things you want to do. And so I think that's a barrier in some of the ways of, we need to go back and look at that, and we've talked about we're going to do that as a board. But I also think we still have those barriers in place, too, that are extra imposed from, you know, TEA has a certain restriction on funding, federal government has certain restrictions, and so how do we all coordinate together? So.
It turned out the barriers were more complicated than I thought.
Yeah.
And in the meantime, I don't want to forget, look at all these great drivers in our system, so many wonderful things happening in Leander to help get us to that ideal. So this is a force field analysis, and, and the purpose of this is really to get you looking at what system, at a system level, what are those drivers and preventers, drivers and barriers? What they say is, if you remove the biggest barriers, that's going to get you to the ideal, accelerate that even faster than focusing on more drivers, more drivers. So what this tool really, Sarah and I chose to utilize this, is to really understand and think through our system, and where we are, to help inform and feed forward the strategic planning, and really getting to those focus goal areas, and knowing that this in particular is going to really be great with our planning teams, when we start getting down to like setting those measurables and all of that, and we'll be sharing this with, with our team. And it's interesting, we actually did this with our teaching, leading, and learning group this week as well, and so we have their drivers and barriers, and now the board's drivers and barriers, so all of this is really going to inform the work of the strategic planning moving forward. So thank you for engaging in this with us. Yes, sir.
Can I make one more comment?
Yes.
I just wanted to make a comment on time. Of all the barriers, this may be the one that we have the least control over, right? Because last I checked, 24 hours is all any of us get.
That's all we got.
The, the thinking here was though, the, and this wasn't necessarily, the idea wasn't necessarily more instructional minutes necessarily, it's just the value of an instructional minute, right? And the way that we covet the time that we have, and the way that we use the time that we have, trying to make teaching really dense in terms of the TEES, and how they can come from different disciplines into a single lesson, or a single instructional period, and the density of that material from a TEES perspective, to make the best use of that time is something that I think could give us a big return on that investment, right? As opposed to, you know, TEES in sequence, right? We'll never get there, we'll, we'll never teach them all, right?
So, go ahead.
No, I just have a question on status quo, the blue dots. How do you thread the needle between status quo, but what some people would say is like honoring your history, and where you've been from, and honoring that, our tradition, right? How do you, how do you do that? Because when you think of status quo, usually what that word means is you're stuck in kind of a rut, and you're like, are you dismissing any thought of change?
kind of a rut, and you're like, are you dismissing any thought of change by saying, this is the way we've always done it? But I'm curious for the blue dots, like, how do you, though, be careful to not, to still honor their history or your tradition, but not in such a way that it doesn't allow you to move?
Right, I, I think, just thinking, thinking about what you just said, I think there's, there's, there's room for both, right? There's room for that, let's honor the history, but then let's not get stuck in a rut about it, let's be able to, you know, I, I think, I totally see what you're saying, is, is thread the needle of being able to do both, and honoring both. You know, it's not, one or the other, it's, I think it's got to be both.
Yeah.
I think, too, it's, it's all about the why, right? If you know what the why is, and it's a good why, then the status quo might be there for a good reason. If we don't know the why, or it's not a good why, then maybe it's time to think about it in better ways.
A wise person named Eric Caugal once told me, be sure you know why the fence was built before you tear it down, and that's the why, and really trying to understand. And I will say, I think Bruce has done a really good job coming into the district and understanding the history, and, and why things are the way they are, as we're moving and leveraging to really innovate that future as well. So thank you for engaging in this with us, and you can head back to your seat.
Okay, so as we think about drivers and barriers, you know, what I love about this tool is it does give just great insight into what you are seeing in the system, and drivers that we can build off of, and barriers that we need to start to remove and work through. And as we move into this next piece, I want to come back to this draft, strategic planning framework. We had shared this and kind of unpacked it a little bit, a couple of meetings ago. And, so just wanted to come back to this, as we're thinking about building that plan that's going to get us to this vision and mission that you've laid out. And for the rest of our time tonight, we're really just going to be focusing on that vision and mission piece that we've, and the graduate profile, but really thinking about those orange boxes, those orange buckets, as we think about priority goal areas. And so, you know, the, I keep going back to the conversation I had when we were in D-WIC last month, and we were unpacking the vision and core beliefs, and the question that came up is, well, how are we going to do this? How are we, this is great, but how are we going to get there? And, you know, my answer was, we're going to, we have to figure that out together, right? So that is collectively, how are we going to figure that out? That is not just a small group, but how do we get everybody's voice at the table to figure that out? But at the same time, through this process, through all of this work, through conversations around drivers and barriers, through the work around mission, and the work in vision, you're starting to identify some things that you're already seeing as areas that we want to be all in, that if we focus in this particular area, and really put time and energy and resources in these goal areas, that that's going to propel us further, faster, towards that vision, right? Knowing we've got some barriers to remove, you definitely talked already tonight about resources, right? So that may be a goal area that we'd really need to think about. We've heard also tonight, the, you know, about partnerships, and that partner, partnering with our families, partnering with our community. Gosh, that could be something that you're seeing, that is something we've got to be all in, because there's no way we're going to get here without that happening. So with that in mind, I'm going to go back to that vision and mission, and really wanting to just spend some time thinking about, what would be those orange buckets? So we're not looking for wordsmithing and things like that, but those just areas, priority goal areas, that come to mind as you think about how, how we're going to get here. You know, it was interesting, I did share a reading from the Four Disciplines of Execution, and as I was going back through it, two things that, that stood out to me, you know, this notion of wildly important goals, right? So one, one piece that Stephen Covey talks about is, if every other area of our operation remained at its current level of performance, what is the one area where change would have the greatest impact, right? So that's powerful to think about, if everything stayed the same, because we've already identified, we've got some great things going on, what, what one area? And then the other piece that he talks about is, sometimes choosing that wildly important goal is about picking something that is fundamental to the heart of your mission, that achieving it defines your existence as an organization. So those were just two powerful things, as we think about, what are those orange buckets? And really thinking about, where do we need to be all in, and really prioritize and focus our efforts in order to achieve this vision and mission? So what you have in front of you are some sticky notes, and I'm going to ask you, just to look at all of, all of these pieces, and I'm going to ask you to think about those buckets, and one thought per sticky note. And really, I'm going to challenge us to think about prioritizing, right? Because as Covey talks about, the, there's the whirlwind of day-to-day operations, right? We're going to stay focused on those things, but really thinking about those priority goal areas that are going to get us to this vision. So I'll give you just a few minutes to think about that.
Do you want these expressed as goals, or do you just want areas of interest?
Areas of interest, thank you for clarifying.
Okay, kind of assessing, are we in a place, we feel like we have a pretty good list?
I think it's a good time to share, but I think this could take days.
We actually have a way to share that hopefully will be a little quicker, and so I'm going to ask you to bring your sticky notes over to a chart.
I just mean, I, I don't have a lot to share right now, but I think we may want to process for days.
I understand, yes, that's great, yes. Okay, so, I understand what you're meaning. So bring your sticky notes and join Sarah and I over at the blank yellow chart paper. Start place one, marked, place one sticky, just making sure y'all are, wait. Yes, Anna, looks like you're ready. You want to share one of yours here? Right, put it here and tell us what it is.
I don't even know if I did it right, but we'll try it. Okay. You want me to read it? Okay. Providing access to programs to all students regardless of disability and financial hardships.
Does anyone else have one about providing access?
See, those look similar.
In programs, to students' access, accessibility, anything else around that one?
I've got one that's like, sort of creating opportunities for students to thrive. Let's kind of come along.
Anna says yes, that goes.
Anna says yes, it goes.
I think that's the same thing.
Providing access, points.
Y'all know I love that word.
Yeah, I love it. That is my word.
Alexis, you want to add one? Not yet? Okay, that's okay, no pressure.
I have a life changer development, and I know we're doing professional development, but this goes back to the curriculum audit we had so long ago, the deficit audit, we asked for it, we know that, but anyhow, the, the, the discussion about it was, kind of, is your professional development, can you do more, can you do better? We do great things, but I love the alignment between professional development, the curriculum, and the support for our life changers, and just kind of really how that would, I don't know, amplify everything, and then, not only for your teachers, but then think about how that works for your staff.
So anyone else have one about professional learning, professional development, growing our teachers in our system?
Professional learning. So I have life changers, it has professional learning, but it's all about the people, the teachers, the staff, admin, the support, everything that goes around life changes, including professional learning.
I have relationship building. I don't, I mean, I was very, no, I don't know about it.
So, anyone, any others around life changers, professional learning, support? Okay?
Change, change horses? Okay. This one says, off the charts, elementary literacy, reading and writing.
Okay, so, focus on elementary literacy, reading and writing?
Not just a focus on, but like...
Academic success, stretch growth, focus deeper learning? Any others around academics here?
Mine is personal learning, and that's academics, whole child, deeper learning, relevant learning, everything that goes around learning, I guess.
I did deeper learning for students, which also would be like their, that's a little different from up here, but it's a part of it.
I'm going to put this off to the side, sort of. This has self-directed sustained investigation and deep research.
It's more than that.
So any others around academics, personal learning, deeper learning, all of those?
I want to do, with Anna's, because relationship, I think of trust and communications, and it would be between like, parents and teachers, parents in the district, between the board staff and admin, between students and teachers, all of that.
Any others around trust, relationships? Yes. I see relationship building, collaborative relationships with students and stakeholders, relationships, village, being transparent, it, community, family, great, okay?
So, I have a problem. So, my second one is, community partnerships and parent partnerships, but it's those, it's different, because it's the transitional years, and like, guiding in age-appropriate ways, where we don't say, okay, sixth grade, now you have to stay away, but really engaging, learning with parents, so they understand their choices of their kids, and...
Yeah. So I put it, but it's just a little different on choosing the right path forward, I guess.
Got it.
I don't have a sticky note for that, but I'd just like to underscore, like, emphasize, because I love that one, because Alexis and I have talked about this before, right? Like, when you go to middle school, it's kind of, there's, there's not, yeah, it's like, thank you, drop them off, now go, what are you doing here? And, and as a parent, how do you now interact with your teachers? Now you have more teachers, and do I need to email them all? Will they all like that email, or do, am I going to now sound like the helicopter parent? But actually, I am a helicopter parent, should I tell them this that early? So it's just, it is, how do you, how do you be engaged with your child's learning, and do, and, and, and participate? And like you said, how do you know those choices that are even available? Whereas in elementary, it's because you're, you're up there, you're doing the Wednesday folder, and a mom tells you about this program, and you know, but it's different when you're navigating middle school and high school, so it's, it's a challenge. So yes, I love that one.
What else?
Providing safe environments for all students and staff.
Safe environments for all students and staff. Anyone else have something similar?
Yeah, I was told from the mission, safe supportive environment, but that for me is operations, technology, facility, finance, everything, and I call it breathing, so it happens behind the scenes, you don't really know it's there until it goes wrong.
So I hear Bruce was using some of his resources, he said he stole it from the mission. One of those areas that we felt is important to focus on. Anything else around environments, safe environments?
Would properly allocating resources fail any of that?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Go for it.
Thank you. Resources.
You know, maximizing your resources, your programs, but deeper than, like, creating campuses that have school choice, or different options.
Aaron's ready.
All right, so, I intentionally held this one when we were talking about some of the other academic stuff. This one says, life skills and adulting. My ninth grader asked me about this today, why can't we learn more about life skills? We can, so.
Anything else around that one, life skills and adulting? Okay, looks like we have a few more.
So I have a student and graduate portfolios, so just that, that they have a finished product when they leave us, that they can show like in kindergarten, this was my art skill, but when I was a senior, this is my art skill, or whatever it is their passion is, that you see this growth chart happen.
But I don't know where you want that, but.
I have one last, says kind of after our talk, honoring our history while looking forward to grow.
Honoring history while looking forward to grow.
All right, so this one's just a hole over from 2015, I'm sorry. I did a lot of studies on class size ratios. And I think reducing our class size ratios does so much to help your staff, your teacher, learning time. It doesn't have to necessarily mean number of teachers. You can have teachers and instructional aid and support staff, and there's all ways to do it, but I just think that's. And then my last one up here, I don't, it's kind of weird, and I couldn't figure out how to, how to title it, so I'm putting it right there. Because it's like this intentional alignment between programs and people, where we're cross-functional, where we're talking together, where it's not like you're in this silo and you're in that silo. And I don't know what, how would actually, what would actually do, but I think we keep asking this question over and over again, like how did we talk to this group? Or hey, did y'all talk to that before we rolled out this program? Or how does that, or how does this policy impact that group? And so it's, how do we as a system really show this intentionality, keep driving that progress for our students?
Anyone else have any? Okay, so now the question is. So there are some clusters that have emerged. There is more. I hear, I heard Trish say there's more alignment than I thought there'd be. So what, what clusters do you see or categories that we could potentially maybe put a title on some of these?
I am wondering if some of the individual sticky notes connect with some of the others that are already.
This is more work. So it's got to be the connections that y'all see.
So communications and relationships, now, is that the same problem as this one?
So I heard you say communication, relationships.
Sorry, that doesn't strike me as what we read with those. Relationship building, community partnerships.
Trust, communication.
Parent partnerships. I don't know.
Communication and relationships.
Make another one.
Again, again, this is just kind of, we're not wordsmithing at this point, we're just trying to capture.
Big ideas.
Big ideas.
It's a bucket.
The bucket for me is it takes a village to raise a child, but there's so many things that happen in a village that come together to support.
So community, is it like the L A S D family when we talked about that and our core beliefs? So in our L A S D family and how we're all working together? I'm ready, I'm ready to write.
So I see, again, trust, communication with our families, our students, all stakeholders, collaborative relationships with students and building, relationship building, being transparent, it's a village, relationships, so.
Can you do the engagement? Is it L A S D family engagement? I like that. Okay, go with that. We're not wordsmithing, let me get that. Get us started. Wreck the bandaid off and go forward from there. Remember, these are just big broad buckets.
So this one seems to have some consistency, talking about. So reading those again, we've got off the charts, elementary literacy, reading and writing, academic success, stretch growth, move to deeper learning, personalized learning or personal learning, relevant learning, academics, whole child, student, deep learning, and then we've got some self-directed. Yeah, I think, I think that fits there. So what would be the category for this one? Again, that bucket, that heading, the big.
I think there might be two there. I think one is about deep learning. I think that elementary literacy is kind of a separate thing. It's academic, but it's kind of different from the others, I think.
Like academic success and academic achievement, where it's us putting the inputs in, and then you have one where it's the ownership of learning.
Yeah, that's fair.
Well, and I think the academic piece is, is a little bit, it's measurable in a different way. Right? You can, you can, you can, there's metrics and there's data and there's all that stuff that we can say, yes, we've got growth in the elementary level, but that deeper learning pieces, are they really getting it deep down? You know, that kind of, I don't know. I can, I can see the dichotomy there.
So a question would be, would this be student learning? Whether it, I mean, then the.
Big sheet, broad bucket?
Sure, but there are multiple themes inside it, right?
I like, whenever Alexis presented it, I like whatever she said, like I feel like I looked at that.
So that we had academic success, which we're the owner of the inputs on that? And then we have the student-led, or student ownership learning happening, where it's the personal, personal ownership and driver of your learning experience.
My question is, is one a subset of the other? Or are they completely separate buckets?
Because I'm going to pull this back up a little bit. Right, I pull this back up, right. So remember, we're looking for the big, the big bucket, the overarching focus goal area, and then all of those others are measurables.
Drop it down in goals.
Right, right. Because we're not writing a specific.
Three or four or five goals in a bucket. But what's the big bucket?
Student learning.
Is a big bucket.
Knowing there's more to it.
These are the big focus goal areas.
I would put my class size ratio under there because it's my overall goal is that, right?
And I guess the life skills and adulting can go under that one as well.
Got the non-three M sticky.
Is this like a birthday?
It's a sign.
Generic ones?
Need some tape.
We'll see. Okay. All right, what next?
Do we want to look at this one? Okay, this says providing safe environments for all students and staff, safe supportive environments, and that includes operations, technology, facilities, properly allocating resources, maximizing resources, building programs. So thinking about a bucket. We're on a roll. Okay, let's hurry and get to that. Okay. Providing access to programs to all students regardless of disabilities, hardships, accessibility to all students, creating opportunities for students to thrive. Providing access points, so. Access. Okay, so we have two, honoring our history while looking forward to grow, does that?
I can put that under.
Because it's still like.
Yeah.
Community, it's affecting our past L A S D educators, our family, people in the community, does that work?
Yep, absolutely.
And then, help me out here.
Is that rogue note?
But see, you're, you're one, I feel like ties.
Intentional alignment.
I feel like it ties into these three.
Cross-functional, across the district. Is that no more here with communication and silos?
Well, personally, I wouldn't, but y'all can if it makes it easier.
No, no, no.
Well, because it's, it's about the fact that, you know, whatever learning program you're doing, you know, is it, it's kind of the stuff that we're going back and embedding now, so we're having the discussions about what our visions are, and then we're rolling out programs that match the visions. And so it's intentional alignment between the access, the student learning, the learning environments, and being the family engaged, it's like, it's not all in a silo. It's not like, okay, Sarah, that's your department, go take care of that. It's like, we all can see how our partner departments work together and how we all coordinate together.
Well, and all the way down to the classroom level, you've got a science experiment that incorporates writing. And you've got, like, so you've got that cross, right?
Right, it's, it can be at your very much grade level, like you're talking about, or like I heard with like fifth grade business fair, right? Because they do their writing assignment, and they do their research, and they do science, and they put it all together. But it could also be like, I'll give you an example, when we went to go visit during one of those conferences, we went to a school, you walk in, and the environment is so welcoming, warm bread, you smell it when you walk in. But it's not like they just put out warm bread fragrance. They make bread because it's their culinary students, and they're making bread, and they help make the lunches, and then they, and not only do they have the culinary program, they have the garden outside where they're doing it. Then they sell some of the products for the older schools and the high school students, and so they're learning how to either do marketing that way, or going, and then your middle schoolers actually have a culinary program they could do. So it's like this intentional, like you, you see it happening in elementary, middle, and high school, so it's like. It's aligned.
That seems to me to be primarily under the student learning banner. It's integrated, aligned, learning.
I could see that.
It could also go at a management layer, or a governance layer, or something, or systems layer, that we don't really have anything else for.
And that's, is that a bucket, Trish? Or does it fall within one of these others that then be able to be intentional?
It's almost a connector. It's like the string between the buckets almost. It's not, it's like the, what the buckets float in or something, I don't know.
And it's okay, Sarah, doing an affinity, if there is, sometimes we do have. No, 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 sometimes we do have one or two that doesn't, and it's okay.
No, I, I, I keep coming back to like some of our experiences, like the deficit curriculum audit, there were certain things that they pointed out, and they're like, hey, why did you pick this program? How did this program work? And why did you not see how it aligned to these things or do these things? And so I just, I think back of some of the products, research and studies we've done, and some of the things we did, but maybe the other department didn't know, or maybe somebody else didn't see the alignment. And so there's just, it's that intentionality that's important as well.
And I think it makes sense, what I'm hearing of this, it's the connection to it all. Right? So if it needs to stand alone, it stands alone, knowing there's almost a dotted line to each of these, right?
So it looks like that we've got two sticky notes, so we need to look at those to see, is that another bucket, or does that go within another one? So. We've got life changers, development, so professional development, professional learning, curriculum support, we've got life changer support, professional learning, admin, teacher, staff, you know, how do we support those life changers? So is that a separate bucket? Or does it fall within?
I was just going to say, I think it's a second bucket, because again, I'm looking at Trisha's piece as like the connector to everything. And I feel like a lot, what Trisha's saying, it connects into her. Intentional alignment. Yeah. I, I, I mean, I look at that, I think it needs to be separate. I don't, I mean, it's, it, I almost feel like it's like Trish, like it's, it affects every aspect of this, but it's so big that if we didn't have this emphasis, then others wouldn't exist.
I don't know, I'm struggling a little bit, because the life changers are the creators of the learning environments, right? They're the creators of the student learning, they're the creators of the relationships and the access and the, I don't, but I don't know what that means.
Well, and I think to the wildly important goal we're talking about, if, if everything stayed the same.
Even all of this, everything stayed the same, I could make an argument in my head right now, where if you did nothing but a hyper-focus on your teachers and your staff, your system would change. And I know we have a hyper-focus, but if we doubled down on that, as, as Aaron's talking about like that amazing reading, if we did a hyper-focus on supporting of our learning, our teachers, our life changers, I think our system would be different and better and stronger, so. More, more, yeah, more. I'm not saying we're not, I'm just saying, yeah, that continued development.
Called it, I don't know if you want to call it professional empowerment, but, does that sound right? This is, this is yours.
I will take, I will take a human interaction over stuff, you know, all day long. So there's something, you know, that, I label them life changers for a very purposeful reason, because they're the ones where the rubber meets the road. So for me, they are so critical, like that's the most critical resource we have. And so I want to put them in a separate bucket, but they're so connected to all the other buckets that I don't know how to separate them out, because I don't want them to be standalone. They've got to be integrated into every bucket, I don't know, but, but we can't forget about them. Does that make sense?
So yes, it does, but I'm also thinking about, going back to Trisha's piece here in the middle, that, right, it is this connection between all of it, because the learning environments, right, is dependent on this family engagement and how we interact with each other and how we engage our community. Our student learning, the academic success as well as the deeper learning, that is dependent on learning environments as well as the family engagement. It acts, so, so I see that it, yes, it may be a standalone, because we want to double down on it, but it is absolutely dependent on.
Would it be life changer development or life changer support?
Well, I like the support.
I think you could go both.
Yeah, I think both.
I don't think we need to wordsmith all of it. I think we've just agreed that it's a bucket.
It's a bucket, yay.
So life changers?
Support, development?
Life changers.
Just life changers. Okay.
Okay, so from this, it looks like we've landed on five buckets as of right now.
That's what's guiding.
I love it.
Really, I love it. It just connects everything.
We need some tape. All right, so Sarah?
Yeah, so why don't we go back to our spots and we can wrap this up and talk about next steps? Okay, all right, so thank you so much for that robust conversation. You know, and you can see why we really wanted to have this as a separate standalone conversation, because we needed to spend the time to really unpack some of this and get what are those big themes that we're seeing? To go back to Trish, what you said about how, where we're going to double down, right, and put all of our efforts in, in order to create this vision and live out this mission. So as we think about what are next steps, and I know we're still kind of mulling some of these pieces over, but want to kind of give you a picture of what is to come. So as we think about these buckets, right, and knowing that we, it's going to take all of our stakeholders engaged in this process to really figure out, okay, where are we headed? So, I mean, how we're going to get there. So I might go back to this framework, and we have that lower level, the improvement planning. So if you can imagine almost taking one of those buckets, and I'm just going to pick student learning, right? And as we think about that, as we have board, staff, parents, and students at the table, really unpacking and doing a SWOT analysis of what are our strengths, what are our weaknesses, where are our opportunities, and what are our threats, to help drive the actual goal development and identifying what are those goals and what are the targets, what are the measures? the measures, and as we think about student learning. What we heard through this conversation, there's two areas that we're, we need to make sure are embedded in that. Academic success as well as that deeper learning, that student ownership piece, right? So that's the piece that will be coming as we start to develop planning teams, as we think about taking these buckets and turning them into measurable goals that will drive the rest of the work. So that, that is, is to come. Also, just so you know, we're going to spend a lot of time over the summer working with campus and district leaders, really unpacking even more than we have the vision and now the mission, really. I mean, what does that truly mean? Because if we, we all have to have that common understanding of where we're, where we're headed in order to, in order to achieve it. We're going to unpack some of this work with them as well, as we move into that, those planning teams and that building of the strategic plan. So just want to end with just the reminder that this is that continuous improvement cycle, right? So we've spent a lot of time in the planning stage, right? That's, and we are still very much there. We've had to take the time to really define where we headed, what are the opportunities, what do we see are the strengths in our district and the ways that we want to build upon those to get to a better and brighter future. Part of what we did here with the drivers and barriers and starting to identify what are the things that we really need to understand about our system and work to remove and barrier-wise, and started to identify some of those buckets, so to speak, the goal areas where we want to focus our efforts and resources in order to develop that plan. And then we'll move into the, eventually the do, while there's lots of great work going on right now, but just the plan, do, study, act, that remind, reminder that it is iterative, right? So we're going to have the larger PDSA cycle of the strategic plan, knowing that within that, there's the annual PDSA cycle of the, of the district improvement plan, and then even within that, there's the continual very small cycles that are happening to, just make sure that we are continuing to move forward to achieve this vision and mission. And with that, I think we are finished. Susan, anything else?
The only thing I would add is, as Sarah mentioned, this summer, working with our campus and district leaders with our vision and mission, also really spending a lot of time with them on our graduate profile refinement, and we've already had an opportunity to start those conversations, but just really thinking about how do we support, and this is not just our graduates to 12th grade, but how do we start this with our early childhood learners all the way through? So just exciting things, so thank you for engaging with us this evening. All right, if there's nothing else, board members, that gets us to the end of our agenda. Thank y'all so much for a robust discussion and a great evening. Thank you so much, Susan and Sarah, for walking us through the discussions this evening. If there are no objections, we will adjourn at 8:30. Yay.